Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. It's Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start off by saying a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'd like to read into the record that in accordance with Mass General Law thirty A, section twenty, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that the meeting is being recorded by the town of Oxford. In addition to the town of Oxford, Robert King of Coburgab is recording the meeting as well. All right, first thing on the agenda will be approving the minutes of the meeting, previous meeting. Oh, first of all, I'd like to have a moment of silence with Cheryl Lottie, who passed away last month. If we could take a moment of silence and think of her and our thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. All right, first thing on the agenda, we have some special permit for animals renewals. We have a number of them. Oh, I'm sorry, minutes. All right, approval of minutes for November second, November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated November first, two thousand and twenty-two for the executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? I'll for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion approved. Next one, approving the minutes for the executive session dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Robert?
Yes, I just wanted to inform the board. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to review these. The assistant got them to me with enough time. I just wasn't able to get to that, so I'm gonna have to recuse or, well, abstain.
All right, thank you for that. All right, so let's call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Sorry. Yes.
And I will abstain as well, because I wasn't there. Next one, and last one, approve the executive session minutes dated November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for November first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
I'll abstain as well, but the record show three in affirmative, two abstention. Minutes have been approved. All right. Next thing, special permits for animal renewals. There are a number of, one, two, we have like five that we're gonna deal with tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to let you know I need to have recused from this matter.
Thank you, Robert. So, Jen, do I read each one? We're gonna take all five together. I'm gonna read the list below. Just to give you a little background, currently, special permits for animals are renewed annually based on the date of the original permit issuance. Kelly Flynn has no objections to the following renewals. Salvatore and Cortland Giannisi, ten Whiting Road. David Newey, three-lanet road. Catherine Raits-McCluhan, sixteen-lanet road. Laurie Tran, fourteen Tremont Street. And Robert Zalusky, seventy Old Webster Road.
I make a motion to approve these special permits for animals for the listed individuals.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dennis?
Yes, I'd just like to note that Robert Zalusky is my next-door neighbor, but in no way is that an influence on my vote.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll call for the vote.
I will.
Vote.
Note that Lloyd Tran is my next-door neighbor, but I have, it doesn't change my opinion.
Tim, you and I don't have any neighbors.
All right, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. I'd also like to state for the record that we had another request from Susan Provost, thirty-four Watch Street. We've decided to postpone that because the board received correspondence from an abutter of Mrs. Provost this morning. The board may want, we wanna skip this tonight and allow the Animal Control Officer, Kelly Flynn, to look into the matter. So, we're gonna postpone that until the next meeting and get a report from Kelly regarding this. All right. Robert? Okay, one of the, next thing, one of the things we've, one of the objectives as a town manager is to work on our website, improvement of our website. So, we're gonna need some people on the board to serve on that committee. I'm looking, are there any nominations to have, I think we're looking for two board members to be part of this.
I nominate, Tim.
Second.
Okay, I have a nomination and I have a second for Tim. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. I'll vote yes, too. So, finally, after a year of our conversation, Tim, we've got our committee formed, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you for volunteering. All right, any other nominations? We need one more.
I'd like to nominate Selectman Frick.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion?
Are you okay, Amy? I didn't discuss that with you.
Nope, that's perfectly, thank you.
I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Thank you both very much for being part of it. We look forward to your weekly reports. I think this is good. This is good. The next agenda item we had to postpone because of COVID, right?
Well, there's a request, Mr. Chairman, that we continue the public hearing for S and K Development special permit for earth removal because there is an illness.
All right, so we need a motion to reschedule this.
I make a motion to.
A date and time certain.
Yes.
So, what date do we want to?
And, well, I would suggest the next meeting, which is December sixth.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to reschedule this public hearing for S and K Development for December sixth at what time?
Seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen.
I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion, guys and girls? Okay, I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. But the record show the meeting has been rescheduled for seven fifteen on December sixth. All right, next one, at the last meeting, we were looking to accept a donation from the Ecumenical Food Shelf. I think Tim raised the question or the suggestion that we might wanna contact them to make sure that by accepting this donation, we're not hindering them or preventing them from providing the wonderful service and assistance they give to our, to the members of our community. So, we had asked the town manager to go ahead and contact and speak to the powers-to-be, and we did get an answer, and I'd like to read this into the record. So, what do we have from Christine St. Martin, who is the chairperson for the Oxford Ecumenical Council? And the letter reads as follows. "After watching the meeting of the Board of Select in November first, I wanted to offer some clarification. The Oxford Ecumenical Council, made up of two representatives from each of the eight churches listed below, voted unanimously on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to send an unsolicited donation of three thousand dollars to the Oxford Community Center. The donation is our way of showing gratitude for being allowed to use a space approximately seventeen hundred square feet in the community center for the storage and distribution of food to the residents of Oxford. Volunteers are at the food shelf for many hours each week ahead of the Thursday night distribution. Without this space, we will not be able to distribute the food in the client-choice manner, which we are so proud of using within this building for the last decade. I would like to assure the members of the Board of Selectmen that this amount of check does not put a strain on our resources and no way affects our ability to provide adequate food to our clients. We are so very fortunate to live in a generous community where so many businesses, groups, and individuals support our endeavors to provide healthy food to those who need help. We also seek grants, some of which allow us to, ability to spend money for non-food items needed to run the food shelf. Money from these grants are used for a yearly donation to the Oxford Community Center to offset utility costs such as the electricity we use to run multiple refrigerators and freezers, needed to store our meat, fish, and dairy and produce. I hope I've been able to alleviate any concerns of the board members, and I ask on behalf of the Ecumenical Council that they vote to accept our helpful donation. Signed, Christine St. Martin." All right, so we did get an answer. I appreciate Tim checking or asking us to check with the powers-to-be, but we do have our answer. So, that being said, I would be looking for a motion to accept this donation of three thousand dollars to the town of Oxford from the Oxford Ecumenical Council.
I move that the board vote in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, to accept the three thousand dollar donation from the Oxford.
Ecumenical.
Ecumenical food shelf to the Oxford Community Center.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? I'll say, yes, Robert?
I just was hoping that maybe the town manager could clarify for members of the community just how if anybody wanted to give money to the community center programming, how they would do that, because this kinda came up before and since it's kind of on this topic, that would be good.
You mean making a donation to them?
Yeah, just donating money to the, to the community center.
Okay.
To the food shelf or the community?
The community center.
Well, I think anytime there's a donation that's made, it comes before the board. If they wanna make it specifically for the community center, we have the ability for them to contact our director. And if they really wanna do that, make sure the director knows and the director forwards it to myself and the attention of Dee, and then we get it before.
So, they should call or email Shelley Lampert at the community center?
Sure, but I mean, they could do that at the senior center. They could do that a number of ways to make a donation, but whether it's a monetary donation or whether it's an in-kind donation, both of them, we have instructed now properly by having them before the board. And to, if there is a request that it go for a specific purpose, then that should be noted as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody set? Let's call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show that I vote to accept the donation with a great deal of gratitude and thanks not only for the donation, but for the wonderful work that those people do in servicing the needs of many of our citizens. So, thank you. We're moving right along. All right, next thing on the agenda is the town manager's report and update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board and to the public. The first item that I'd like to provide a report on is our Veterans Appreciation Luncheon. The Veterans Luncheon was once again an overwhelming success. Thanks in large part to our senior director, who is here this evening, Laura Wilson, the school superintendent, Mike Lucas, and our veterans agent, Dave Adams. Music was provided by the Oxford High School Band while our NJ Rodsy was in attendance to provide the National Anthem and present the colors. So, we had state representatives, Paul Frost and Joe McKenna, as well as Senator Ryan Fratman, who brought greetings to the town, and we had more than a hundred and eighty attendees for two separate seedings. And I wanna thank you to all the volunteers that Laura was able to help muster along with those that also were willing to do that on their lunch break from the town hall. So, I wanna thank everyone who attended. I know that several of the members of the board here had attended, and that was great, and it was a nice way to segue into the traditional memorial observances that were on Friday. The second item I'd like to report on is the ADA Project Grant. I'm so excited. It's been a number of years to try to get this grant, and we finally took a different road instead of going through the Mass Office for Disability. I had put in for a grant in September through the Community Compact Best Practices Grant Program. As the board's aware, that we were able to get one in terms of updating our website, which is one of the reasons why you're taking a vote now to help participate in a community committee that I'm putting together. But also, we had also applied for creating and updating our, what we call our Assessment and Transition Plan. This town had one that goes back to nineteen ninety-four. It's very thin. Many of the buildings that used to be acknowledged in that report, some are no longer part of this community anymore. It's just extremely outdated. But despite that, the fact that we had one actually put us on the bottom of the list through the Mass Office for Disability, which they thought that was better than having nothing, although I would argue that the best practices today would account for wanting to update that. So, we never had a Commission on Disability. We do now. I informed them that we are getting a forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollar ADA Improvement Grant to create a new self-evaluation and transition plan. And the Commission on Disability, I met with them recently to let them know before this meeting that we're really excited that we're getting this grant to put this new plan together. And we've accomplished an awful lot in terms of making accessibility a priority across the town, but we have more work to do, no doubt about it. Our buildings are old and our infrastructure is old. So, this will help identify and provide a roadmap, very similar to a roadmap, like a master plan or roadmap for open space recreation. This is a roadmap for accessibility and addressing those in a comprehensive manner. So, I'm looking forward to that, and we'll be putting together the major stakeholders, which of course includes everybody from facilities to our senior, our senior community to our community center community and obviously our Commission on Disability. So, we're looking forward to that. I can tell you, this is the fourth time, so I'm glad we were able to do it. Tony and I, we took a Hail Mary to try it in a different way, and it's come through, so I'm really excited about that. The next item to report on is the MSB update. I wanted to let the board know that through the tenacious efforts of working collaboratively with the school and the former school business manager, we did put in that statement of interest. I announced that we had been invited to go into the accelerated repair program. But since our last meeting, we got another letter that I put in your packet to tell everybody across the state that they're gonna be discontinuing the accelerated repair program or at least pausing it indefinitely. So, we were one of only sixteen communities on the final block that got accepted in before they're gonna put a stay on this program. So, we're very fortunate. I wanted you to know that. And because of the actions and the votes the board here in the school committee took to modify our proposal and put it in, we were able to get accepted into that. So, I'm breathing a sigh of relief, because had we not, we didn't know when we'd ever be able to get another opportunity. And some of that is because the amount of market volatility along with the supply issue demands with actual projects that they had in the pipeline was going up higher and higher, and it wasn't necessarily sustainable based on the amount of money that the legislature was giving as well as the MSBA was giving to this specific program. So, you know, it's good news for us as we can try to go forward and figure out how to actually address these roofs, which are very expensive, and this funding, hopefully, once it's set in motion and we know exactly what the dollars will be, we'll be able to, you know, give ourselves a lot more longevity in the buildings that we have for our children attending school. The next item to report on is the, excuse me, school buildings foundation repairs. I was, my office was notified that our town is gonna be receiving a twenty-five thousand dollar legislative amendment for state funding to be used towards the elementary schools' foundation repairs. I have brought up in the past how we have a great deal of cracking and some concerns that have been raised about what's happening with those foundations. And we had some preliminary estimates that were put together by an engineer, and we had appropriated some money towards finding out what those engineers' reports were estimating. Initially, in our capital estimates that came from the school, it looked like about ninety thousand dollars. But then we actually put a engineer on the task of providing a real, a real estimate, much more in-depth, and we're finding out it's much higher. It could be as much as high as five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to repair those foundations. Now, having said that, twenty-five thousand dollars was an actual appropriation in the budget for the state that State Representative Joe McKenna had put in, and I just signed off on the contract for that. So, that is a small amount of money that we are hoping will actually help us define the real true cost estimates as opposed to just the engineering estimates. And we're going to think about how we're gonna look at both that and the roofs going forward and maybe combine the projects together, but that'll be a conversation I'll be having with the superintendent. But twenty-five thousand dollars will be helpful towards the costs that we're already incurring to find out really what the true, true impact is gonna be to the bottom line for our capital program. The next item is, just to let you know, I know some of you know already, that our latest edition, you can take one, pass one down, of Onward Oxford is out. I'm really excited. There was a little bit of delay, and, you know, part of that was having some both transition in my office and also some unfortunate personal family issues that I had to deal with so that I didn't get around to it right away. But I have been able to put it together, and there's a lot of great items in here. I keep reminding people, it's not only about featuring the different departments, but some of the upcoming timeliness of different events and also to show some of the types of work that each of the departments do. So, if you're in town hall, get it. If not, it will be available at different opportunities whenever we can to provide it to people. Our veterans that came in were able to take a copy home, and a lot of them thought that was great, too. So, I wanna thank the department heads once again for helping put that together. It's information they think is very important. The next item to report on is Green Communities. I just wanted the board to know that we have a lot of work that we have to do departmental-wise to provide to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. This is our third grant round that we were able to get competitive funds in the order of two hundred thousand. But in order to actually access that, we have to be able to close out an annual report. And I wanna thank Director Mike Lupus, who's the director of our facilities, our assistant town accountant, Trish Arker, and also Tony Susaf for helping collaborate and pull the multitude of data that's required to fulfill the annual reporting. And once we put that in, then it opens up the two hundred thousand that we have been granted. But if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be able to apply for next year's, twenty twenty-four. So, this puts us back on the road to do that, and we're hoping, you know, on the fourth year, we'll still get funding. The next item to report is the Jocelyn Annex Demolition. I wanted to provide the public with some pictures. Initially, if anybody knew what the Jocelyn Annex looked like, right behind the community center, it was a pretty ugly building. It's been a long journey to get that building down after unanticipated additional costs due to hazardous materials. Initially, we didn't think that there was ones. We found out there was asbestos that was in the sealant that was used in the foundation, and all of that wound up actually driving the cost up and delayed the project. So, I wanna thank Director Duvall, Director Duval, to helping us be able to put this together. And as you can see from the pictures, the actual equipment's gone, the fencing is gone, and what we have is a nice blank slate to think about going forward. The total projected wrapped-up budget was both under budget for the project, but it wrapped up on time, and the original cost estimates were two hundred and forty thousand. But like I said, we were able to come in under budget, and the fencing is already removed. So, good job to the DEW for helping move that project along. The next item is, I just wanted the board to know that I did get a letter from the International Association of Firefighters Local forty-six, thirty-four. I got the letter from Dennis Fitzgibbons, who is the president and lieutenant for our fire department, that the current agreement for their collective bargaining contract will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. So, I will begin negotiations to hopefully have a successor agreement in place prior to the expiration, but I just wanted the board to know. I can't believe it's already been three years. It's just like COVID made everything just like that, I'm telling you. The next item is to report on a major construction project that will, hopefully, I'll have an update maybe the next meeting. The Mass DOT has informed myself and Director Duval that there will be a pre-construction conference on November twenty-second with contractor DW White Construction. So, this is for the Route Twenty project, which originally was slated to be something like fifty million, and the bids that were coming in are over, I think, over ninety million now. This is for a three-point-two-million-mile stretch between the town of Oxford, going over the French River Bridge, crossing, there are basically twenty-six hundred daily vehicle trips along this regional thoroughfare. And the work is going to twenty-six thousand, did I say that? Oh, yeah, no, it's twenty-six thousand, sorry. Everybody, I'm recovering from being really sick. If you can't hear it in my voice, and I think I'm still being impacted. I'm not getting enough oxygen. Not enough oxygen to the brain. I've got this raspiness going on. Yes, there's twenty-six thousand daily vehicle trips. And the work is anticipated to begin later this winter initially and continue through next year and the year after. Next item is just, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Animal Control Department because Oxford recently hosted a statewide regional conference for animal control officers that are looking to be certified through an academy. And the academy was held here in Oxford with the Mass Animal Control Officers Association, along with the support of Municipal Police Training Committee, the MSPCA and the U.S. Humane Society. It was held over a number of days, both at the PD training facility as well as the Oxford Community Center, and thirty-four animal control officers attended. And this certification program is considered to be one of the best in the country for animal control education. It involves intensive training. And our animal control team of Kelly Flynn and Ed Hart have been selected to help host this for a number of years because they have both held in very high regard within the professions. So, I wanted to congratulate them on having a very successful academy. As you can see, the chief over there, before he retires, I swear, you know, he might be having a next life in his retirement, maybe part-time work in animal control. He's holding a python over there on the left-hand side. And, you know, at first, I didn't know what that was on that guy's arm, but you can clearly see it's a bunch of different snakes, so. So, what they learn is they, you know, through their training, how to handle all kinds of different situations. And if you look at some of the information I put in about the academy, they are not just learning how to take animals that are in danger or pose a danger to the public, but they're often using their skill set to also impart education and protocols. So, they did a great academy. That's a great tribute to this town that we've been selected multiple years to do this. So, hats off to a good thing. Oh, yeah, sorry, yes. And there is a quick little, is there a little video, I think, of the animal control? It's very.
This has been a twenty-year process of training law enforcement all across seventeen states. They train them on potentially dangerous animals that they might encounter in their jobs in a domestic dispute in a recent fire.
They came to teach the human officers how to safety hand down all different kinds of reptiles, including poisonous snakes, alligators, crocodiles, turtles.
It's a very hands-on program, so we will be letting them handle venomous snakes and things like that also. That's what this is for, to make them more confident, you know, to give them that confidence to identify an animal. If they can't, they can always send it to us, and we can identify the animal for them.
It's not that we would handle them a lot, but it does happen sometimes. You might go into an apartment and take out an animal like this, and we're usually by ourselves. So, it's good to know how to handle them safely. Safety, 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 and our safety, but also public safety.
Public safety is number one, to try and get that animal out of the wild. If someone does let it go or it gets out of its enclosure and gets into the environment. If it's, even if it's a legal animal, we wanna make sure that the animal's safe, the people are safe, that law enforcement can have the ability to make people safe and to take care of the animal and make it safe.
Jen, is it true all those animals were taken out of carbuncle?
I don't know, but my first, my first job as a town administrator, there was, you know, an alligator that was taken out of a house and a very rare tortoise that was, somebody had just left and was, you know, in sub-freezing temperatures. So, you never know what, you know, is gonna happen in your community. But hats off to those people for handling all those kinds of animals. But the next item on my report was just to give an election. But the next item on my report was just to give an election update. We had a very smooth state election last week, thanks to our town clerk, Michelle Jenkins, senior clerk, Amelia Lupus, and all of our dedicated election workers. Oxford's unofficial results indicated there was a voter turnout of 51.53%, and in terms of early voting, we had 553 voters participate at the senior center, thanks to the collaboration between our senior center director to cast ballots in advance prior to the election in a 14-day period. And with regards to vote by mail, we had received over 1,680 ballots and had an aggressive elections communications plan, which was executed over many months and was well received by the community. So I want to thank everybody from the election workers to our constables, our police officers, and most often, probably quietly, they accept their humble duty, and that is clerk's office. They do a great job. And just to close out the evening, just a couple of community events that are very important and we're trying to drum up attention to. The first one is the Oxford Holiday Light Parade, which will take place December 4 at 5:00 p.m. Last year, we had for the first time an actual holiday light parade, instead of the typical driving around the entire town with Santa freezing on the top and breathing diesel fuel throughout the entire town. So the fire department came up with this holiday light parade. It was so well-received, it really was, it was terrific, and so we're going to do it again this year, and we expect it to be bigger. But the parade goes from North Oxford Fire Station to the bandstand, where Santa will be dropped off for a tree lighting ceremony. And anybody who's interested in actually putting their vehicle into the parade, you know, just contact Deputy Fire Chief John Belancher at the department, and we can supply you with that kind of information. So not to be outdone, because the seniors will never be outdone, right? The senior center is trying to get everybody into the festive holiday spirit by hosting a holiday concert on November 30. So you're going to go from Thanksgiving right into Wednesday, November 30, at 12:30, featuring Heather Rae for a holiday concert, and the public is welcome to attend that. We don't get an often lot of correspondence about different events from Bay Path, and I saw this one come by my desk where the Bay Path Educational Foundation was hosting a Santa Claus Pancake Breakfast on December 3 from 7:30 in the morning to 10:30, and oftentimes, residents want to show their support for vocational technical education. They could become a sponsor or show up and actually participate in this, and they should just contact Sue Foskett, who's been up at the school for many years in the superintendent's office. And then finally, on December 1, 9 a.m., the community center is hosting, along with Friday, December 2, at 1:00 p.m., an event called Brown Bear, Brown Bear, What Do You See? And this is a preschool-age storytime and sing-along, and parents can register at OxfordMAMirec.com or call the community center directly. And bring your favorite stuff in. And on that, I will conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. With that, I will look for a motion for adjournment.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Five in for affirmative. Have a safe trip home, everyone. Thank you.